My name is Marty Graham and I will be serving as the Chair for tonight's meeting as Ms. Coran is out of town. I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7 o'clock PM on May 21st, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have an adoption of an agenda.
Alright, yeah, next my announcements. Thank you. Of course, it's a busy time of year, last few weeks of school, and the students all know that most of you guys are doing what? Yes, I know, it's very sad, I know. So, there's a lot of testing going on, a lot of end-of-year programs that are happening, but it seems like most are in good spirits, so we do appreciate all your hard work there. Last Monday, we recognized and celebrated over 600 years of combined service for our retirees, and so just want to thank them again for all they've done for us and we will miss them. But that was a really, really great occasion last Monday night, we really enjoyed that. Couple other things, I've been able to attend the last, this past few days is chaperone the Blacksburg Middle School Band Trip to Kings Dominion, and they were grand champions, the band was, and the choir also won first place, and so they did a wonderful job. Today, I made it over to Blacksburg High School, they played in the Tennis Region Finals and they beat EC Glass in tennis to win the region finals and they'll move on to the state quarterfinals next week, so very excited about that success. There's a lot of athletic activities going on in all of our schools now, so if you have time to get out and support some of our students and teams, we would definitely appreciate that, so that's all I have.
Great. Our next item is awards and recognitions. Dr. Meyer, I'll turn it over to you.
Alright, let me go to the front here. I'd like to recognize a couple of our retirees here from our central office. First, I'd like to have Mr. Dan Baranato, if he would come up.
Dan started working for MCPS in 1998 and has served as our Director of Facilities since that time. Dan was instrumental in the building of Eastern Montgomery Elementary, Price's Fork Elementary, Blacksburg High, Auburn Middle, and Auburn High. He has worked with his team to maintain more than 2 million square feet of buildings throughout the county. The Work Five Facilities Team is often commended by third-party facility studies, and this is a thanks to Dan's leadership. Dan, thank you for your many years of service to MCPS and congratulations on your retirement.
Next, Dr. Lois Graham, you can remain standing.
Our second retired administrator recognition is our Deputy Superintendent Lois Graham. Lois has dedicated 39 years to public education, starting as a special education teacher at Bellevue Elementary School in 1980. She also worked at Christiansburg Primary and at Margaret Beeks before starting her work in central office in 2007 as the Director of Elementary Education. We're glossing over her time in other school divisions because Lois started and ended her career here in Montgomery County. As Deputy Superintendent, her work has been invaluable in continuing to move our district forward while always focusing on what is best for students. She's a cornerstone in the district and within the community. Thank you, Lois, for all you do, and congratulations on your retirement.
But Dr. Graham, you still get to work, so you can go up and help us out, alright? Thank you, Dr. Graham.
It's also my pleasure to introduce some honors and awards tonight as well. First, I would like to say thank you to this board, you have been wonderful to me and the whole time that I have been here, and to Dr. Meyer, and to all of you. It's been a wonderful 38 years in education, and I will greatly miss it, but I'll come back and dabble a little bit. Our first recognition tonight will be the Performing Arts Awards. If Sam Questionberry, who is Assistant Principal and also Lead Music Teacher, would come forward, she will introduce those awards.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to be here to show off these wonderful students. As you can see, we have quite a few here for our Performing Arts Awards tonight. So we're going to start with elementary, and if the students would come forward when I call your ensemble or your name, that would be great. The director's just going to get the pack of certificates, because there's a lot, so... The Eastern Montgomery Elementary Mustang Choir, under the direction of Denise Burdick, placed first with a superior rating for Single A Elementary Groups in a competition at Dollywood on May 11th. The choir that scored only two points higher than their score of 92 was a middle school choir from a Double A group. So if Ms. Burdick and her students would come forward, please. (applause)
Congratulations, all of you guys, you guys are awesome. Can I shake all of you guys? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Wait. This one. She's going to go around her. Nice job. Awesome. Awesome. Awesome.
Good one. Strong. You don't have a strong.
Awesome. Love it.
Okay, Mayor reminded you, too.
Awesome. Nice job. I bet you get to see that in the middle school then.
Good to see you, Denise.
Yeah, I like it. Thank you very much. Well, that was just fun. The Kips Elementary School 3 o'clock band, under the direction of Glenn Chilcote, received first place, beating five middle school percussion ensembles at the Music in the Parks Competition in Williamsburg, Virginia. Mr. Chilcote's students are not here this evening because they have SOLs tomorrow morning, and so they're home, eating their good dinner and getting lots of rest, but Mr. Chilcote has come this evening. And we have one last elementary award. The following 5th grade students from Gilbert Linkus Elementary School, under the direction of Ann Baranato, participated in the Virginia All-State Elementary Choir. And if those students would come forward, we have Mumtahini Ahmed, Annabelle Chow, Abigail Herrera, Lucas Holland, Rui Patel, Colby Stewart, Ziggy Wang, and Christina Yang. Nice job.
Nice job.
Great job. Good job, students. Good job, students. Good job. Good job. Good job. So we now know why our middle schools and high schools do so well, because we have that as a foundation. In middle school, under choir, we have the Blacksburg Middle School Choir, Bel Canto, under the direction of Kate Foiles, was selected to perform at the Virginia Music Educators' Conference at the Homestead in November. All BMS choirs received superior scores from the judges at District Choral Assessment in March. Is Kate here this evening? There we go. The following students from BMS were selected for All-State Choir. Maria Grove, Henry Goldschmidt, Nora Coleman, Shriya Sritar, and Madison Stewart. And Maria Grove from BMS was selected for National Honor Choir. Wow. So for high school, we have added a new category this year, and I'm really proud of this, to have our theater departments recognized as well, so we are the Performing Arts instead of just music, and so I'm really thrilled about us doing that, and I hope that continues in the future. So for theater, at the Virginia High School League Festival Awards, Blacksburg High School, under the direction of Carrie Mayer, won second place at Subsectional Theater One Act Festival, and Genesis Simmons received the Outstanding Actor Award. And Carrie, you probably just want to stay. You want to stay, because you've got lots of them. At the VHSL Region 3C One Act Festival, Eli Cook, Bailey Morrison, and JR Jordan from Christiansburg High School, under the direction of Michaela Witten, won the Best Actor Award. Blacksburg High School won first place at VHSL Regional Theater One Act Festival, earning them the opportunity to go to state competition, and Caroline Jones and Genesis Simmons won the Outstanding Actor Award. At the VHSL State Theater One Act Festival, the Outstanding Actor Award was earned by Michael Milton from BHS. Virginia State Thesbian Conference. Christiansburg High School students Abby Witt and Eli Cook were awarded Outstanding Actor. The Christiansburg High School Cast of Antigone and American Tragedy, under the direction of Michaela Witten, was awarded Outstanding Ensemble. Going to shake our hands? Real adults here. Congratulations, guys. Great job. Congratulations. Blacksburg High School. Blacksburg High School received the award for Outstanding Tech Design for Lafayette Number One, Outstanding Physical Work for Lafayette Number One, and Brian Bush and Caroline Jones received acting awards. While we have BHS up here, they also received Outstanding Physical Work for Brothers Grimm, and Whitney Welbaum and Bryn Yon received acting awards. I was reading, sorry, I was basing all your awards there. Good job. You guys look like you're having a blast. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. I love you here. Congratulations. She's got too tall. Congratulations. Miss Mayor, can we get the rest of BHS up there before we take the picture? We have Markley Bortz was elected as Virginia State Thesbian Officer. And Brian Bush, Emma Bush, and Genesis Simmons from BHS scored superior in their individual events at the Virginia State Thesbian Conference, earning them a spot at the national level Thesbian Conference. We have one more theater award tonight, so if Michaela Witten would come back up. Michaela, the CHS Drama Teacher, received the State Theater Teacher of the Year Award. So we're moving on to band at the high school level. Blacksburg High School, under the direction of Darrell Pierman, was selected to perform at the Virginia Music Educators Association Conference at the Homestead in November. Darrell is at a boosters meeting this evening. The following students were selected to attend the All-Virginia Bands and Chorus. Megan Asbran from BHS, Emma Nichols from BHS, William Poland BHS, Jonah Winesthorfer BHS, Gwen Barnes BHS, and Todd Cochrane CHS. They're probably in this line, but BHS band students Megan Asbran and Emma Nichols were selected for the 2018 National Association for Music Education All-National Honor Ensembles. And BHS band student Jonah Winesthorfer was selected to perform in the 2019 Music for All Honor Band of America. He's not able to be here because he just had surgery. The Blacksburg High School Band was awarded its 27th Virginia Honor Band Distinction. And we can't leave out our singers. For choir, the following students were selected for the All-Virginia Chorus. Aaron Krug CHS, Colby Brown CHS, Marissa Adams BHS, Anna Beacon BHS, Sam Freeman BHS, Joey Zobel BHS. Sam Freeman from BHS was selected for VMEA Honor Choir. Liza Thomas and Marley Van Mulcom from BHS were selected to participate in the ACDA National Honor Choir. And all those choir students are led by Tim Woolwine, so if he would come forward, please. And Kate, if you would come back. So both the Blacksburg Middle School Music Department and the Blacksburg High School Music Department were awarded the Blue Ribbon School of Music Award from Virginia Music Education Association. So those are under the direction of Tim Woolwine, Darrell Pierman, Kate Foiles, and Harry Farmer. Thank you so much for allowing us to recognize these wonderful students. We're very pleased. Thank you.
So if Eddie Walters, our Director of Transportation, would come forward, he will present our next awards, which are the National School Bus Rodeo Awards.
It's my pleasure to talk about two of our drivers this evening. The first one is Josh Simpkins. He is a 30-year veteran school bus driver from Montgomery County who currently drives in the Auburn area. Recently, Josh competed in the Virginia School Bus Safety Competition, commonly referred to as a rodeo, and won first place in the small bus competition. He then went on to compete at the national competition and placed first in the nation. During the competition, Josh took a written test and then had to maneuver through a driving skill-intensive obstacle course. Josh has competed at the national level 10 times, placing in the top 5 on 7 occasions. Josh is a shining example of the caliber of school bus drivers that transport our students in Montgomery County. Congratulations, Josh. The next that I'd like to talk about is Kathy Graham. She is a 24-year veteran school bus driver who currently drives in the Christiansburg area. Kathy also competed in the School Bus Rodeo at the state level and placed first in the conventional class. She went on to compete in the national competition and placed fourth in that class. She has competed at the national level four times and has placed in the top 5 twice. She is another great example of the quality drivers that we have. Congratulations, Kathy.
We will take a 10-minute break so that our board members may congratulate everyone.
Up to 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted 3 minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the 3 minutes has passed. As a reminder, the board does not respond to speakers during public address. I have two signed up for public address, so I'll call both of your names and you can come up and state your name and address. Glenn Chilcote and Matt Fintris.
Well, like most of my life, I think I'd sign up in the wrong place, but...
Glenn Chilcote, 1404 Glade Wood, Blacksburg.
Matthew Fintris, 395 Summit Ridge Road. It's a road, not a road. Christiansburg. That was one of the best crowds. So last year, we started with the MCA Friend of Education Award, and we're here this evening to do the same.
Absolutely.
The Montgomery County Education Association would like to present this year, MCA Friend of Education Award to Penny Franklin for all of her support of the values, the MCA, as well as the Montgomery County Public Schools and our whole community, though they all left us. And I'm going to apologize if any of this is incorrect, because I was just trying to look up some things, but I found out that you were the first African-American elected to public office in Montgomery County. That you've been on the Montgomery County School Board for 19 years? I think that's correct. She is a founding member of Montgomery County's Dialogue on Race. Ms. Franklin is president of her local union, which, I like that idea, where she works at Hubbell Lightning. She has always been a passionate advocate for Montgomery County Public Schools' children and the staff that take care of them. When the subject of compensation or working conditions for Montgomery County Public School employees comes up, she has always promoted for the utmost respect for us teachers and staff. When she speaks, she speaks, I always feel, from the heart. We thank you for your service to our community and always being a champion of equality for employees, children, and our schools. This is why the MCA would like to honor you, Ms. Franklin, with the MCA Friend of Education Award.
Please stand and give her a huge round of applause.
Our next item is consent items. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess since Matt and Glenn both spoke, we are now at the end of public address, so public address is now closed. Don't laugh at me, Brenda. The next item on the agenda is consent items. If there is nothing to be pulled from the consent agenda, then we will consider the consent items approved. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? No? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to approve the bill payments as presented?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Motion is approved. We'll move on to the financial summary report. Do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial summary report?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Our next item is to enter into work session. Do I have a motion for us to enter into work session?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Alright, so next, we have a presentation tonight from Ms. Froggett, Ms. Deanna Rule. We're here to present information on the Educational Foundation. The Educational Foundation provides valuable grants to our classroom teachers. I've been amazed by the work of the foundation and the growth that I've seen during my time here, so Ms. Froggett.
Thank you, and I apologize that Ms. Rule could not be here. We moved this presentation so many times. We managed to land it during her vacation, so I'm flying solo tonight. First of all, thank you, Dr. Meyer, Vice Chair Graham, and fellow board members. As you know, we have a wonderful foundation called the Montgomery County Educational Foundation. It is the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that exclusively supports Montgomery County Public Schools. It is, in effect, your PTO. This is our mission statement that we developed many years ago. You may recall when I first spoke to you, it's been almost six years now since the last time we presented. We had developed this mission statement that states, "Our mission is to provide financial support to enable students, teachers, and administrators to discover, advance, and enhance educational opportunities. An investment in our schools is an investment in this community and the development of productive global citizens." Just to remind you, some of you have seen this before, but our primary goals at the foundation, first of all, are to provide opportunities beyond the scope of available public resources in preschool through 12th grade. This does not mean that it is our goal to replace public funding. We are simply trying to enhance it. We also provide resources for creativity and innovative programs and materials. We accomplish this goal primarily through our educator grant program that Dr. Meyer mentioned. In addition, we strengthen educational leadership to improve student achievement. This was an area that we've really highlighted more recently, didn't do so much in the early days, but we've added to our educator grant program the opportunity to earn grants for professional development. And then finally, we seek and develop avenues for businesses, individuals, and organizations to contribute to MCPs. We do not wish to compete with any of our PTAs or our school support organizations, but instead to enhance those opportunities. And in fact, our PTAs and PTOs can actually apply for MCEF grants. And also, there are times when businesses who want to donate to public schools can do so by going through us as a 501(c)(3) and get that additional tax advantage as well. You may recall this rather busy slide from many years ago, but it sort of explains the structure of the Educational Foundation and how we work with the Community Foundation. We are endowed through the Community Foundation of the New River Valley. Through them, we have both an endowment fund that is designed, obviously, to help sustain the foundation and our Grant Pass Through Fund. Those funds are invested and managed by the Community Foundation, but we, the board of directors of the MCEF, are the ones who actually direct the funds towards the educators who apply for the grants. Those, as I indicated, those are invested and we get earnings off of them. The endowment fund is intended to sit there. We don't use that money. It's supposed to grow. However, we are allowed, on an annual basis, to use the earnings if we so choose, or we can reinvest them. Majority of our grants come through our Grant Pass Through Fund through the Community Foundation. Then, of course, the other thing we have are our personal MCEF accounts, where we have both a checking and multiple savings account. For example, we have an NCAA compliance account because it is the law that if we raise funds, which we have done, for example, when we've raffled off signed basketballs or footballs from Virginia Tech, that those funds must be directed towards something other than, I believe it's grade eight through 12, because of the conflict of interest there. So we have to manage separate accounts. Those are managed by the MCEF board. Also, by having funds with the Community Foundation, that does give us some tax advantage. The laws, in the way it currently stands now, is that a nonprofit that earns less than $50,000 per year does not actually have to file a complete, a full tax return. They just have to file electronically. And thus far, by maintaining funds there, we've been able to stay under that federal limit. Just for a little history to remind you, in the beginning, we were essentially reformed, well, we initially formed in 1987. The bylaws and the original articles of incorporation, which are still with the State Corporation Commission, were adopted on November 30, 1987, and then actually incorporated on December 9 of 1987. At that time, looking through our documents, we found that we had 31 members on the Board of Directors. Most of them were prominent citizens and business owners. At that point, we're not sure what happened. There were no known assets and no financial records for many years after that. So then, if we fast-forward to 2011, that's when the foundation was essentially reorganized and reformed in response to the budget cuts of 2008, 2009 that really strapped our schools and our county. At that time, we had a very loosely organized governing board, consisted of our superintendent at the time, which was Ms. Blackburn. Our assistant superintendent, Walt Shannon, was serving as the treasurer. Our school board clerk was kind of voluntold as our secretary, and we appreciate very much that she did that. And we had two school board members at the time. You may recall it was Mr. Ivors and Ms. Albritton, and then one community member, which was Susan Morikawa. They together reobtained the nonprofit status on August 4 of 2011. They established our funds with the Community Foundation, both the endowment and the pass-through that in November of 2011. And at the end of that first year, we had assets totaling just under $17,000, but had not, at that point, awarded any competitive grants. Some of the early accomplishments in those days. Soon after the reforming of the board, they started recruiting board members to form a true Board of Directors. Ms. Albritton stepped down, and at that time, Ms. Woolsey, who was on the school board, stepped into that position. We recruited Dr. Lois Graham to be on the board, and then they recruited me in early 2012. We started off by doing a little marketing tour, giving presentations to community organizations and service organizations such as the Rotary and the Ruerson Clubs, and steadily continuing building our Board of Directors. Our first competitive grants were actually awarded in fall of 2012, totaling $2,888 for five projects. Using resources at Virginia Tech from the Small Business Consulting Class and five interns, they developed our five-year business plan, which was created and implemented at the end of December 2013. And then our new bylaws were adopted on January 14, 2014. So as I mentioned, we spent a lot of time trying to build our Board of Directors to where we are today. This is how it currently stands. You may recall that we have two school board positions that are ex officios, which are currently Ms. Graham and myself. The superintendent is also ex officio, as is the deputy superintendent. In addition, we have a variety of... Okay, let me get back up there. First of all, I'd also want to point out that several of those early board members had actually been on so long that they had to leave at the end of their six-year term limit. And I know some of them are sitting in the audience tonight. I know Debbie Sherman Lee is out there, and she just finished her six-year term. And we do have a couple other board members here as well, so they're wearing our cute little shirts, by the way. But we try to pull our board from throughout the community, representing all four of our communities, representing business leaders, members from our school. We are allowed to have two full-time school employees. We have several accountants, which is really nice to have on the board to keep your finances straight. So what you see in front of you is our current board. We now, because of some of the losses recently in retirements, we have some openings. We're looking for a secretary, and we have several additional board members, so if anyone's interested, we're taking applications. We do, as I indicated, we have good representation from MCPs, business leaders, financial experts, former and current educators, and community members. We would like to possibly have a legal expert on the board, as well as more parent representation. And of course, when I exit at the end of this year and roll off the board, we will have an opening for school board members, so any of you who are interested, we'd love to see you step up. Just to give you an idea of the financial growth we've seen since the creation, and the reason I included July 31, 2013, that is actually the last time I stood in front of you and gave this presentation, so I'll give you a little update since then as well. But as I indicated before, at the end of our first year in 2011, we had assets totaling just under $17,000. When I spoke to you in 2013, we had gotten that up to almost $60,000. Fast-forward to December 31 of this past year, and we're now sitting with assets of over $225,000 in our endowment, our pass-through, our checking, and our savings. And another reason we have that savings sitting there is we're now saving to do a full, complete audit of our books, something we're going to be doing on a regular basis as opposed to just internal audits. Another thing we're very proud of, of course, is our educator grant program. This shows you where we began in 2012, fall of 2012, with our five grants totaling $2,888, and that has grown over the years to this past year where we awarded 44 grants totaling $36,166.20. Every school, including Montgomery Central, has benefited from our grants, from at least six grants, as well as the New River Valley Detention Home. We've also awarded grants to programs that work with us, such as Head Start, the Tuxedo Pandas, the Chinese School, the YMCA, and the Junior Appalachian Musicians, or JAM as they like to be called. Another area we've worked hard in is supporting MCPs programs. Most of these are countywide programs, things such as Winning Choices, On-Campus Transition, the STEM Academy, the Work-Based Learning Program, the Christiansburg Institute, the Governor's School, for a total of over $52,000 in program support. And of course, I know you're very familiar with some of our other sponsored events, in particular, the poetry contest, which, of course, we presented just a couple meetings ago, which we've now been doing for seven years. We've done one Partners in Education Breakfast to support our Work-Based Learning Program and are hoping to do a second one. We did a benefit concert for three years that showcased a lot of the student talent that you saw here tonight. A lot of those kids were like elementary school when they performed for us. They're now in middle school and high school. And then one year, we did do the Harlem Wizards Basketball Game. All of these events were sponsored, so they were essentially at no cost to the foundation. We had sponsors for all of these, but it did provide excellent opportunities for our students to participate. And just one note on our poetry contest, thanks to the wonderful support we've had from the 100-plus Women Who Care organization, that is now sponsored for five years. So looking forward to our future. We, once again, because our five-year business plan was expiring, we used the Small Business Consulting Class, again, at Virginia Tech, to work on our new five-year strategic plan. And they just presented that to us a couple weeks ago. Included in it was a new vision statement, recommendations for our board restructuring, committee development, and more focus on sustainability. So guided by the students and using our mission statement and the MCPs motto, "Engage, Encourage, Empower", we developed our new vision statement, which we're presenting tonight. The Montgomery County Educational Foundation is dedicated to engaging the community and providing sustainable funding to broaden the educational opportunities for all students by empowering educators and encouraging innovation. One of the recommendations was some board restructuring. We'd like to not necessarily build the board, but build our volunteer base more now, and also start to delegate a lot of the duties that have been primarily shared by the president and the executive team, not only across board members, but also across our volunteers. We're going to add a chairman of the board position, which will share duties with the president. We're going to add committee heads to be able to delegate some of the duties that were being done by the president. We're also adding a volunteer base to help delegate duties that had been done by board members. Our executive team will now consist of our officers as well as our committee heads, and we've even advertised to use an MCPs intern next year, so we're hoping that will happen. In terms of committee development, if you may recall some of our committees before, we kept the fundraising and program committees. Obviously, those are very important, something we want to do. We eliminated, for example, the board development committee, because we're at that point now where the board is developed. We just need to maintain it, so we didn't feel like we needed a full committee for that. We combined both our grant writing and grant awards into a single grant committee with two co-chairs. We sort of revamped our communication committee into community outreach, and that's going to include website, social media, as well as community events. And then we added volunteer coordination, because obviously, we're hoping, as we build our volunteer base, we're going to need someone to coordinate all of those volunteer activities. And finally, talking about sustainability. Of course, our endowment fund is the main source for sustaining the foundation. And over the years, we hope to continue to grow that, eventually to a point where simply the earnings of the endowment would support the educator grant program. But in addition to that, we have added a couple of separate named endowment funds. We created one in 2018, and we're about to create a second in 2019. These would individually support a grant each year from now on, as long as they exist. We're also looking to diversify our investments by broadening our investment portfolio, especially our cash alternatives. And then finally, you'll see up there, I think a lot of you have followed us both on Facebook and Twitter over the years, and our website and our email address, but we now have two new social media platforms that were created by our interns. We are now on Instagram and LinkedIn, something we hope to expand. And then, moving forward, I'll gladly take any questions, but we're just very excited about the future of the MCEF, and we hope you feel like it has supported you well and will continue to do so, and that we have managed it and handled it well for you over the years. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I'm certainly grateful for the work that the MCEF has done and just the numerous grants. I mean, I think I've gone many years, as many of you guys have, to the awards banquet, and that's always just a great time to see exactly what that money's getting turned into at the classroom level, really.
And that's really the highlight of the year for us. It's what you work for all year long, to enjoy that and see the excitement from the educators when they receive those awards. It's wonderful.
And I think it's awesome to be in the schools and know the grants that have come, that the teachers have requested, and see that seed money and watch it sprout and grow and continue to grow each year. So that's been really awesome. The Ukulele Club is the first thing that comes to mind, and that is still an amazing program at Bellevue.
And we've tried to focus a lot of those grants on seeding ideas when we talk about creativity and innovation, things that will eventually become part of regular MCPs. For example, we were giving grants for tablets before we had the one-to-one initiative. Now, that's something that we have in five through 12, an area that we're funding a lot now that I think you're going to see more of in the future, actually in your budget and accounted for, or more alternative seeding and engaging classroom options. That's something that has really been on the forefront lately. But, yeah, we've tried to be something of an incubator to teachers who want to try these new ideas but don't currently have the funding to do so.
Teachers are very proud to let us know when we're in schools where the money came from, for different projects. In fact, just the other day, I was at Montgomery Central, and Mr. Stanley took me out back to show me their new greenhouse. And he said, "Oh, the foundation gave us money for this." It's really neat to see the excitement that it brings us.
Yeah, of our 20 Teachers of the Year, five of them were MCEF grant recipients. And many of our former teacher, countywide teachers of the year have been MCEF grant recipients as well. So it shows we have good teachers as well, that they make the effort to apply for these grants.
I'm excited about some of the future changes. You know, having been involved in a lot of community organizations, it does get hard to sustain something like this in the long haul, and it does take dedicated people like yourselves to keep that going. And so that's one of my concerns, is, you know, how do you keep this kind of a thing going? Certainly, the vision statement, I think from the success that the MCEF has had, I think it's good to focus on kind of the broader vision of supporting education in general and engaging the community to do that, because we can certainly do that through charity and philanthropy, and there's other ways to do that, too, that I think the... and there's other ways to do that too, that I think the, the, the foundation can really help us out with. And then, I guess on the sustainability side too, that's, you know, again, that focus. I, I did want to ask you, under the diversified investing, my understanding is that the community, the, the Community Foundation kind of runs the endowment, is that true?
Correct. They, they invest all of those funds, yes.
At, at the board's direction or on their own?
On their own, the Community Foundation's board's direction.
Okay, so when you said diversified investing, is that through the Community Foundation or?
Yeah, some of this will be our own investments. Primarily, like I said, primarily cash alternatives, because funds just sitting in a savings account aren't earning much these days. So we want to be moving some of that around, and at least just the money we take in for grants, you can easily take out a CD that's going to sit there for six to ten months, that's going to earn more than it would sitting in a, just a simple savings account or a checking account that doesn't earn anything. So we're getting to that level of assets that we need to start considering doing that as well. That's why we have accountants on the board. And we're very grateful for them.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Ms. Diggs and Ms. Whitaker. They're here to present information on the mental health services that we provide to students and to employees in MCPS.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer and board members. So, every chance I get, I like to take the opportunity to make sure that everyone is aware of just the challenges that we have in the schools in terms of the mental health supports that we need to provide for our students. Over the years, we've seen a significant increase in the number of students who are exposed to trauma-based experiences. And most importantly, the impact that that has on their academic performance and school success. But tonight, I think it's also fortunate for you to know that we have some awesome counselors, both within our school walls and those that we invite in to be partners with us, to provide some services to our students, because they have the professional expertise to do that. And they can give that information to us through a mental health perspective, so that they can help us to understand the challenges that these students are dealing with and the best ways for us to approach those, those challenges. So this evening, I'm going to spend some time sharing some of that information with you. So to begin with, one of the first level of services that we offer to our students is our school's counseling services. And that's just our, those counselors that we have in each of our schools. And they provide services basically on a tiered level. So at the tier one level, they provide services to our students in the classroom. And most of those services are offered in a preventative kind of a way, so that we're giving them tools and ways to deal with any situations that they may be faced with in their, in their lives, both at home and at school. At the tier two level, we offer those services on a much smaller level, and that's usually in small groups. And we're providing those services to students who might, we might have a group of students who are experiencing the same concern. Maybe there's a group of students who have lost a pet, and they are grieving over that. Or maybe they're being bullied, and we need to pull a group of students together that we provide supports for around that. So at the tier two level, that's the, the kind of service that we offer, it's usually in a group-like setting. And then the next level, the tier three, is where we offer more individualized services to students, and that's to provide a more individualized or unique opportunity for students to work through any specific problems that they may be having. Again, we address issues that students are having, whether it's in the school setting or whether it's something that is at home that they're trying to deal with. We're trying to help them bring some resolve to that, to problem-solve around it, and also to come up with some coping mechanisms, so that they can learn to manage whatever it is that they are dealing with. Along with that, we also invite families to come in and provide, have them to be part of that team or that treatment team, because it's really important for parents to know also how to offer those supports to the students. So our school counselors are very involved in, in making sure that it's a very holistic approach in terms of offering those services to our students. And then, when those services may not be enough, then we also reach out to our partners, and we refer to outside mental health services. And we also consult and collaborate if a student is receiving outside services. We like to invite their counselors to be a part of our treatment team as well, so that we're working collaboratively together, and we're all working on the same goal, to help the student become successful. So the next level is our tiered intervention specialist. And first, I want to thank the board members, myself, for agreeing to continue to provide that opportunity for our school district that was being funded by the Aware Project. So we will be able to continue to offer some more individualized, as well as group services, to our students in our schools, and then to help them, them to work through the process that, that even gets us there. So some of the mental health services that they provide are directly to the students, but they also provide coaching opportunities for our teachers, so they can go in and coach and model how an intervention should happen in a, in a classroom. More, direct services have been around the nicotine and vaping psychoeducational sessions. We've seen an, like a, it has been an extreme uptick in providing the vaping services to our students, because we're seeing so many more of those cases coming to us, almost too many to, to really provide the services in a meaningful kind of a way. But we're, we're still working on it, and we'll continue to work on it. We're also exploring some different ways in which we can do that. We, we need to get more information, be more preventative in nature, and getting information out to parents, making sure teachers know what to look for in the classroom, because it's a, it's just been a very, very interesting concept to, to digest. Another area is social skills building. That's, that is one area where our students just really struggle, especially if they're trying to navigate and negotiate different situations that they've been involved in. And they don't necessarily always know how to come to school and manage their feelings about different things. And so, those social skills building opportunities give us a chance to model appropriate behavior, and it also gives us a chance, the, the students a chance to, to do some role-playing, so that they can figure out some ways in which they can respond more appropriately. So another area where we are providing some mental health supports is in the classroom, and more specifically in our health and PE classrooms. So we are using, you all may remember a few months back, me telling you about a simulator software that we're using to help enhance mental health knowledge with, between our students as well as our teachers. It's called Cognito, and it's a simulation software, and it's specifically around suicide prevention instruction, and making sure that people can know the signs of an individual that might be contemplating suicide, and also ways that we can respond and to offer help to anybody that is experiencing that. So we are offering what's called the Friend-to-Friend Program. And again, it's taught to our ninth and tenth graders in their PE classes. It gives the students examples of ways that they can help their friends when they may be having a mental health crisis. And also through Cognito, our staff members have access to what we refer to as the At-Risk and Step-Up Speak-Out simulators. And these are specifically for the LBGQ community. And those lessons teach our teachers how to intervene when students are again in crisis. So those are two ways that we're using Cognito, just to make, for an awareness kind of a program. Our ninth grade PE students are also participating in the Too Good for Drugs program. This is a curriculum that's preventative in nature, and it was first presented to us by our Community Services Board, NRVCS. But it is now being taught by our PE teachers, I'm sorry, that one is actually being taught by NRVCS. Our PE teachers at the sixth and seventh grade levels are teaching Doing Project Alert, and that was a curriculum around substance abuse that was promoted by NRVCS. And to maintain some sustainability with that program, we are now having our PE teachers to teach that one. So when those school-based services are not enough, that's when we collaborate and reach out to our community partners. And so one of the first ones that we reach out to is NRVCS. As you all heard, last month, we have close to a twenty-year partnership with them. And so it's been a really great partnership, it's been a trusting relationship, and we work really strongly and collaboratively with one another in order to provide services to students. If we don't feel like that our services are, you know, enough for a student, then we typically move to this level and offer additional services. So as you can see here, some of the services, of course, that we offer are crisis services, and that is specifically for our students that are basically, that are in crisis. And they, that means that they have a high level of need for services. And what we're doing in the schools isn't necessarily a love. We also offer, they offer the therapeutic day treatment services, that's more a one-on-one services provided to our students. They provide risk assessments for us for students who may be at high risk or even imminent risk of harming themselves or others. They provide assessments for those students, and then we have team meetings to look at that information and make decisions about what's the best placement for a student. Again, they offer individual and family, as well as group therapy sessions. And the most important piece to this is that they do offer services to family members. Many times, a lot of the, the situations that our students are dealing with happen within the home. And so if we can get everybody on board, if we can get family members participating in the services and working to problem-solve around the best way to, to manage whatever the situations are in the home, we know that that's going to be best for the students. They also, so students can also, can get services in their home. And sometimes we can do that in addition to the services that are provided at the school. And then last but not least, they also offer a summer program, so that students don't lose ground. So that the things that they have learned and the goals that they have worked on during the school year, they continue to work on those during the summer as well. They also provide our services in terms of helping us to manage our students with substance abuse issues. For those students who have more serious substance abuse issues, they have a trained clinician. Actually, the clinician, we were able to help make that happen through our Aware Funds, for that clinician to be on board. And they provide what's called the Adolescent Community Reinforcement Approach. The acronym is actually called ACRA, and it does address more of those more serious substance abuse issues. And then, the clinicians that are in our schools on a daily basis offer a less intense program for our first offenders. But again, we're offering services for those students with substance abuse issues. We're also fortunate enough to have other agencies that provide mental health supports for us. National Counseling Group has joined our school division by providing therapeutic day treatment to our preschool-age students. That was a population that kind of, we were, we were missing in terms of providing direct services to. And so National Counseling Group has been able to step up and provide those services. And we all know that early intervention is always, is, is best. And so, the feedback that I'm getting is that that has been long-waited for service, and I'm really glad that we've got that in place. The other is the family, so we also sometimes refer our students to the Family Adolescent Planning Team, and that's a county planning team. But before we get to that point, we try to service these kids using the same multidisciplinary approach through our Family Resource Team. So we have actually these team meetings once a month in each of our strands in our schools. And we have persons that represent the Department of Social Services, Court Services, NRVCS, again, National Counseling Group, as well as Montgomery County Schools. And we work as a multidisciplinary team to figure out who can best serve a student based on the needs that they have. So if a student is homeless, we might have DSS that, that jumps in and tries to offer the services for the student. So it just really is based on the, the student's needs. And that interdisciplinary team has been extremely successful. We have had already this school year over a hundred and forty meetings around providing those services for students. And this year, we're proud to say that we also included elementary. We started this at our secondary level, but we have now included elementary students as well. And that wraps up the services that we have for our students.
Ms. Diggs, I can ask you a question. And I don't know if you have it in your head or not, this number, because I remember hearing this at some point, the number of students that we're serving in these programs.
I do not have the, the total number in my head at this moment, but we have served over, you mean as far as counseling? Like total counseling?
Yes, like through New, like, for instance, New River. I, I know that they have a lot of students in their case lines.
They do. They, I mean, I think over the year, over this school year, it's been close to like, between six and seven hundred.
Six and seven hundred students are getting these services through New River.
And that doesn't include the ones that we are seeing as well.
Right. And so we're seeing even additional ones, the number of students that we're, that we're working with. The number is incredible.
The number has increased exponentially.
Do we have a number on how many of those are drug-related incidents, I mean, needs?
I'm sure we do, I ju, I don't have that data with me. But I would just say, Jamie, the, the majority of them are trauma-related. The majority of them are trauma-related.
But how many trauma relations deal with, I'm just going to throw this out and just say it, parents that are incarcerated because of drugs?
It could be, sure, oh, absolutely.
A family member that's committed suicide because of drugs.
So I'm sure that there's some drug-related incidences with all of those. Oh, yes, ma'am, no doubt.
And so how, I mean, I think probably most people have no idea that we offer those many, that many services to students, that they are available. How do we, how do students find out about this or get into this? Is it because of a discipline issue? Is it because they seek counseling from a guidance counselor? Is it parents? Is it referrals from teachers or administrators? Is it all of the above? How do they?
It is, it is all of the above. It's, you know, it usually comes up, not necessarily as a disciplinary issue, although it could be that. So if I'm thinking of an elementary-age child, that sometimes it is that the child is acting out, and we're trying to find the why. And so many of these come through our SAP process, our Students Assistance Process, where we're there meeting on students and trying to figure out why students not being successful. Because sometimes it's not behavior, sometimes it's just that students failing. They're not performing well in the classroom. Their attendance might be an issue, that's another sort of a warning sign for us that helps us to know that something else is going on. And then it's through those meetings where we're problem-solving, brainstorming, coming together, trying to figure out what's, what's the best resource, that then we make sure that parents are informed. Because for us, if we're not involving that parent, we're missing part of the, the, the process that's needed to make sure that students are successful. So we, that's, that's a piece of it, but you can also see that a piece of it, students are getting regularly right in the classroom.
Because it, for me, the high school students in particular are the ones I worry about the most, because they're old enough to understand what's going on, to know they're possibly depressed or feeling suicidal, but also I think less likely to show it or talk about it, or feel comfortable going to someone that they can talk about. And so I feel like that's where trying to get the word out more to students, that these services are available, and that it's services are available and that it's okay to access them, because I think that's a big part of it too.
Absolutely.
As we've learned, is this, this feeling of, you know, we've heard about the stigma of mental illness and that we need to eliminate that so kids feel comfortable asking for help.
We've liked the Cognito simulators because we are putting the students in front of that information to enhance their own awareness of what to look for in their friends, because the friends are going to likely go and tell another friend, a peer, before they're going to come to, to any of us as the adults. So we felt like it was really important to, to make sure that we're expanding the knowledge of the P of base. And you know, we also have the, the anonymous reporting system where, where kids can also...
Love that, I love that, because so many kids want to help other kids, but then they're afraid.
Yes.
Because they don't, but I like, I like the hotline, when I saw that, I was just like, yay, this is great. So that's a great, that's a great thing. I can see that doing great things.
And explain to the board what that is in case they don't know quickly.
So we have moved to Tipline, which is a part of Securly, which is part of the system that we already use for the Chromebooks and so students have a way that they can either send an email, I think they can send a text message, they can even call, so there's, there's a number that they've been given to report any concerning behavior, whether it's, you know, self-concern or if it's for a peer. And then we're really liking this system because they have their own personnel that sort of vets the concerns that come through before they even send it on to, for the principals to review as well. And then of course, that information is shared with our principals and then actions are taken.
So it's very timely that we hear for the last two board meetings that I've had about what services we are offering for our students. I just heard on the news the other day that suicide is the highest cause of death for children 10 to 18 years old and the wonderful, wonderful peer programs that are coming up to, we're trying to do to help students understand it's okay, it's okay to let someone know that somebody's having a problem and they need some help. So it's just wonderful to hear what we're doing. So the small groups, I find that very, very interesting to know that the students are talking about the same issues that are going on with themselves, because when we talk about trauma, you know, it's a word that's being used a lot now, but I'm going to raise this point again, that for African-American students and other students of color, there's a trauma that goes on every day of our lives and to be able to help our young people understand what is happening with them and the feelings that they're feeling and to have those conversations and how to deal with that is going to make them better as they get older. They won't have to be like me and be mad a lot, right? Be upset and, you know, throw fits and whatever it takes to make someone listen that there's a problem. So I hope that we're going to be working on setting up those types of small groups.
Absolutely.
To have those conversations.
Absolutely.
Possibly bring the, bring the parents in to have those conversations and we might even talk about some of that. Again, I just, I just think it's wonderful what we're doing because it is so needed to make sure we've got our arms around those children.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
So I'll share a little bit with you about training that we provide for our employees as well as services that are available to our employees. And so our, our school counselors and tiered intervention specialists, professional development, mental health-related training that is provided to those. So they get initial training and then ongoing training each year. And so counselors and tiered intervention specialists receive training every year and the referral processes for our mental health services, refresher trainings on common mental health disorders, crisis procedures and how to help students who self-harm or threaten This year, for the fourth year, we will offer to our employees mindfulness training and you might say, what in the world is mindfulness training? And essentially, it's literally brain training. So if you practice with regularity, the parts of your brain for attention, concentration, body awareness, emotional regulation, compassion and positive emotions will grow. And so this is a pretty comprehensive professional development opportunity. Of course, our professional development is choice, so our employees get to choose whether or not that's something that they want to do, but this is one of those opportunities and it is provided through an external resource to our employees and I don't remember exactly how many weeks, do you remember? For the mindfulness? It, it's many weeks, it's a seminar that they go to and participate in. In addition, we provide the Youth Mental Health First Aid Training that is provided by our tiered intervention specialists and that's available to any employees who choose to do that as well. We have our Employee Assistance Program, which you'll, you'll often hear us call EAP. And so there's a couple of different components about EAP that you may not know all of the pieces. So when most people think of EAP, what they're thinking of is the free benefit that we provide to our employees. So every single employee in Montgomery County has four free counseling sessions every single year that are available to them. They can go to those counseling sessions, nobody knows, their boss doesn't know, I don't know. Essentially, we just get a report from Corillian that tells us how many people are going and kind of what the trends are for what they are being seen for, whether it's work-related, family-related, but we don't get information on specific individuals, it's just a report of the, the overall span of the, that quarter and what the usage rates look like. Sometimes the employees, if they go and they, and they get those counseling sessions and a referral is needed, then the EAP counselors will refer them to an outside agency and so they can continue their counseling through that way. In addition, EAP is available as a resource for human resources and so we are able to use that in a variety of ways. If I speak with an employee who I feel like is in crisis or I have an employee who is telling me, I just can't cope, I can't take it, I can get them to a counselor that day. I have had the opportunity to get our employees to a counselor within 30, 45 minutes, reach up, pick up the phone, I need someone to talk to our employee today and they are so helpful and they get, they get us someone if they can right at that moment. So that's one way is we, we can, you know, they can refer themselves and they can go. I can also reach out and get assistance for that individual. And then another way too is some training. So say we have an employee who's having an ongoing behavior problem at work and we're seeing a behavior that we've asked them to stop repeatedly and they're having a difficult time changing those behaviors. We can refer them to EAP to get some counseling. So that might be how to learn how to effectively get along with your coworkers. It might be how to manage stress at work and not lose your temper, any variety of different topics that that individual might need. Sometimes that would be voluntary and sometimes it would be mandatory. In a mandatory situation, that is when an emergency is needed and we're saying, in order, you know, we want you to stay as our employee, but we really need to make sure that you have the tools necessary to continue. And so that individual would then go to EAP for that reason and kind of get that assistance. They can choose not to go, but if it is a mandatory referral, you know, then that would not be them completing what they needed to complete with us. That doesn't happen a lot, it's more in cases where again, somebody is having ongoing behaviors and we're trying to help them learn how to change those behaviors by getting with someone who can maybe help them work through that process. That is used a lot by our employees, you know, EAP, again, I don't get names of who those folks are. Every employee is aware of this benefit, they're taught the benefit when they are brought on a new hire orientation and every single year at our mandated training, they're reminded of our Employee Assistance Program, how to access the program, that it's free to them and that it's available to them at all times. So annually, they certify that they are aware that this resource is available to them because we want to make sure it's not just something they hear the first year and then 10 years later, they've forgotten that that resource is available to them. In our employee handbook, Policy 5-7.5 speaks to employee benefits and so the policy specifically states that the Montgomery County School Board recognizes the importance of a sound and inclusive leave policy for the promotion of physical and mental health of its employees and for maintaining good morale. And so that's Policy 5-7.5. We also have a fully funded health plan that is available to all our employees. The health plan is fully funded and they're, you know, they're deductible, is funded by the school board as well. So that ensures that our employees who are eligible for that benefit have access to the resources that they need and that they do not have to pay for that themselves and so they can, they can take that employee-free plan and utilize those resources that are available to them. In terms of our leave, I've truly never seen a school division that has such a comprehensive leave plan and so many different types of leave available for their employees. So we have personal leave, that is the type of leave where you get to be gone and your boss can't ask you why. So essentially, as long as you, you know, ask for it with 48 hours advanced notice, you, you get off. Your boss doesn't say, why are you taking that leave? You say, I need a personal day and you take a personal day. We have annual leave, which you may refer to as vacation leave, which is certainly important to our, our mental health. We have our wellness leave. Wellness is if you do not miss a day within that quarter, then you are given, I think it's per half of a year, you're given a wellness leave day that you can take at another time. We have professional short-term educational leave, that may be someone who has something that they need to work on for their professional studies, maybe they need to go on a three-week sabbatical somewhere to complete a, a portion of their professional studies and so they're able to do that. We have extended leave, which allows an individual to be out up to two years, they can take a year, say they need, they just need a year off, they want to stay home and maybe take care of their family or they want to continue their professional studies related to education or their spouse is being moved for a year and so they're able to go with them. And then that individual is able to get the next available position in the area that they are qualified for upon their return. We have unpaid leave, which allows an individual who is out of leave to request to be able to be gone, even though they don't have any days remaining to them, they can request an unpaid leave through the school division. We have annuals on there twice, I'm sorry. Temporary medical disability, which is available and these are some other, some other leaves that are available, I'm sorry, the left side has gone. Sickness and accident leave. We have a sick leave bank, which is extremely comprehensive and that allows for those individuals who use all of their sick days and participate in the sick bank. They choose that, they elect to be a member so that if they are in a situation where they're out of days, they can then apply to the sick leave bank to, to cover their absences for a pretty long period of time. We have the parental and extended parental leave, which again is to take time off to take care of a child. We have civil leave, which is for court, military duty leave as well. Then we have optional benefits, I didn't list every benefit that we have available to our employees, but we have a huge list of optional benefits that our employees can take, which are short-term, long-term disability, cancer policies, all different types of policies like that. We do have a Division Wellness Committee, which is a part of our Policy 5-7.5 and that Wellness Committee does focus on the mental health of our employees and mandates that we have two wellness initiatives each year. And so we have those wellness initiatives, which are voluntary for our employees to participate in and our goal in those is to focus on both their physical and their mental well, well-being. So an example, last year during our wellness initiative, the goal was to exercise X number of times per week and then to do something for yourself one time a week. So that could be read a book, do yoga, sit in a closet and hide from your children, you know, whatever it is that it might be that makes you happy, we wanted to tell our employees, please focus on doing something that's just for you. We of course provide all required leaves under the Federal Family Medical Leave Act and so that covers any type of leave. If we have an employee who needs to be hospitalized due to mental illness, FMLA provides that coverage for them if they are an eligible employee and nobody knows. Nobody knows why that employee is out, other than myself and the other HR employee who manages FMLA, I don't even tell their supervisor the reason that they're out from work. If someone's doctor signs off on it, it's not anybody else's business and we have to protect their rights and protect their privacy. And so that's available for mental health or a physical concern that an employee may have and it's protected by their federal rights. I listed for you a bunch of policies and some may look and say, maybe right off, that doesn't seem like it, it is something that's supporting mental health, but I believe fully that these policies are in place to protect our employees. So the first would be our sexual harassment and harassment based upon race, national origin, disability or religion, any of those protected classes. And so that's a very specific and clearly defined process that our employees can go through to make a complaint if they are having a concern of either discrimination or harassment. And all of our employees are reminded annually what that process is, they're trained, here's where to go, here's the materials, here's the tools you need. Anybody who files one of those complaints, there is a mandatory investigation conducted by myself or the other compliance officer, if that would be more appropriate, to make sure that we're taking care of our employees and responding to their concerns. Personnel Records 5-1.4, I know which you guys have heard me quote quite a bit, but that is the policy that says our employee's information is confidential and we therefore cannot discuss someone's information, such as why they may be on leave or any other things that may be occurring with an individual. We are not allowed to share that information and our policy ensures that we protect our employees' rights and we protect their privacy. The Whistleblower Protection Act, 5-1.7, that's in place so that an employee can make a report on their supervisor without fear of retaliation. So that's to say, if somebody reports a concern about their supervisor, that it will be looked into and that they will not be retaliated against and that if that does occur, then that individual will be in trouble for that retaliatory act. Our Abuse of Work Environment Prohibition Policy, which is 5-1.8, speaks to the type of work environment we need to have, to the way we're going to treat our employees and the fact that we will not allow bullying to take place in our workplaces and that we are not tolerant of hostile work environments. And then I quoted again for you there, 5-7.6, which is the Family Medical Leave Act, which again is provided by, for federal law.
All right, I have a question, if you all can clarify something for the board. The Youth Mental Health First Aid Training, we've had several employees go through that, several teachers, administrators, I think even Ms. Karan went through the training. Could you explain more, well, do you know how many we have?
So, I will say, it's, it's a, let me just say that as a person that participated in it, it is a full-day training and again, a lot of it is about awareness, it's about prevention, it's about understanding what some of the characteristics are of someone that may be experiencing some mental health issues. We have seen a decline in the number of employees that are, that are actually participating in the training and in fact, the, the numbers that I got for this school year so far is we've had about 20 employees that have participated in the training.
Any idea last year or in the past couple of years?
It's been a steady decline, so it may have been 40 last year, but yeah, we, we've seen a decline, which was one of the reasons too, that we put Cognito in place, because it's, the employees have an ability to, to sort of access that on their own time, it's not as lengthy, it doesn't have quite as much of the information, but at the same time, it does give them information in regards to...
So what's the purpose of the training?
The Cognito?
That or the Youth Mental First Aid.
So the, the purpose of it is again, to provide information regarding mental health and some of the characteristics of someone who might be experiencing some mental health issues, but it also, and then it, it gives the, the participants an opportunity to know how they can respond if they see someone that may be in crisis. It also talks about some preventative measures that we can provide for classroom, as a, as a classroom resource or maybe if counselors are working one-on-one with, with students, it provides some of that information as well.
What are teachers told to do if they do find that they're... What are teachers told to do if they do find that there is a student who's in crisis through this program?
So through the youth mental health first aid? I would say, and I, I can't say that I remember just off the top of my head, but I mean, one of the responses is, is going to, to seek professional help, and in our school buildings, that is going to be the school counselor.
Right, so this program does not teach our teachers how to provide mental health, mental health services to students?
No, no.
It's identification?
It's an educational tool.
An education.
Right, so they, it's there for them to recognize students who need help, as opposed to the teachers being the ones who try to provide the help.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, we want, those who are actually providing the help need to be our, our licensed people.
Absolutely.
Who are licensed in mental health.
Yes.
And so that's, that's important to understand about these programs. So, you know, it's important for us to recognize and for staff to recognize students who are in crisis.
Because we're seeing so many more students in crisis.
Right, we're seeing tons, and so, but then for them, for teachers to know, okay, what, what next?
Yes.
And, and who, who can we help?
Right.
Um, who can help these, these students?
Correct.
So where is the training done and how often is the training?
So the training is actually started through the Aware Grant. It was part of that process, and then they were supposed to present at least four trainings a, a school year. And so this school year, because we, like, would not have enough participants, we would have to cancel some trainings, but they would happen at the school board office. Some schools, like early on, when we started promoting the trainings, some school teams would decide that they wanted their whole school team to be trained, so we would take the trainings actually to the schools.
So we've had a large group of, of teachers who've been trained.
We do.
In this program. I think it's dropped off some because we have had so many who have been trained. But this, this might be worth, I know we really pack it in for new teachers, you know, when they get here with us, but this might be something worthwhile for new teachers.
It would be.
To, to have them go through it.
Yes.
And in fact, it would definitely be, maybe great, possibly for a new license program to have as part of that program.
Absolutely, yes.
So.
Absolutely. So when, when might the next training be?
I don't have the schedule. I would have to, to get back with my folks. Jim Baldwin is the one that usually typically coordinates that.
Y'all are welcome to, to attend.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, in fact, so this, this school year, while, while we had twenty of our employees that participated, we also had twelve community members that participated in the training. So yes, we're open to offering the training to anybody that's, that's willing to participate. We would offer it to church groups, civic organizations, just anybody that's interested.
Okay, great.
I wanted to share one additional piece I forgot to say during the EAP. We do also have a, a big catalog of training opportunities that are available to us that our administrators can use, provided by Carillion. So like the school counselors have done some training sessions through them, and so one thing we are going to do for next year is send out a list of the topics to teachers and employees and ask them, which ones would you be interested in us sponsoring and hosting so that we can get some of those scheduled and use the training that they provide to us in that way? And also to use some of that training for next year to work with our administrators to have the Carillion folks from EAP come in and, and do some sessions with them as well.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. We've, I think several of us have been to different sessions, BSBA, places like that, talking about mental health, drug addiction, drug abuse, opioid problem, all of that. And as Ms. Franklin pointed out, suicide is now the leading cause of death for our tweens and teens. You know, looking back, one thing I have learned as part of being part of Project Aware, which there were only three school divisions in this state that participated in that, we are in Montgomery County very much ahead of the curve of most school divisions. I think our state government in particular, but society in general, has lagged severely in this area, recognizing it, de-stigmatizing it, addressing it. I just did learn in a recent Hot Topic Conference that the state is finally dumping a lot of money into sort of completely revamping the services provided and paid for by the state in terms of whether it be, you know, what we do, hospitals, counseling, all different things, they're completely reforming that system, but it's way late. But the other thing that concerns me, too, is just the, how much it has changed, the stressors that our teachers and our students, both and, and our administrators are under now, are just unbelievable compared to like when we went to school. And when you think about what those are, you know, you look at things like standardized testing, we didn't have any of that when we were going to school. Peer pressure, bullying, competitiveness.
Social media.
Social media. You know, you look at things like this college admissions scandal. These parents were willing to break the law to get their kids into an Ivy League school. So those are the pressures we're putting on our kids these days, and it's coming from everywhere, from society, from parents, and is often the case, it's our public school system that's being tasked oftentimes to deal with it. And, you know, we've done it many times with physical health, for example, feeding kids. For, you know, for a long time, kids, they maybe got lunch at school. There are a lot of school divisions now who just feed everybody breakfast and lunch, they don't ask, can you pay for it or not? They just feed them because we've learned, a hungry child is not a child that can learn. And once again, I think our public schools are being tasked with addressing a problem that is not being addressed by society, not being addressed by the government. If we took the money we spend on standardized testing alone and put it into mental health instead and got rid of, we'd number one be getting rid of a lot of the stressors, and number two, be addressing those problems that aren't being addressed. And so we've got a long way to go. Like I said, I applaud you and, and our staff for what they have done. The, the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support's a great start, and like I said, we, we are somewhat ahead of the game because we have done that, but there's, you know, so much more, and, and, you know, we're lucky we were able to go through that program and that we have continued to support it. And it's been, I think, a model in this state for a lot of other school divisions to follow. But yeah, it's just, it's becoming, I mean, opioid addiction, that didn't exist when we were growing up.
That's what I was going to say, I mean, but it sounds like a...
The things that we have these days.
But it's the truth.
Vaping, didn't exist.
One of our people, you know, have an opioid addiction problem. I mean, I think we have to be careful not to stick our head in the sand over that, and I think sometimes we are, but that's my beef, and I'll shut up. But I truly think part of all, I don't want to say all, but a lot of the mental issues come from, based somehow, whether it's a traumatic experience, but yeah, so many people addicted to opioids. And it changes the way they think, it changes how they react, it changes how they parent, it changes how they grandparent, it changes how they work, you know? I mean, I've been on so many different boards that all the businesses around here, they're not saying, they'll, they'll tell you, we cannot get employees that are not drug addicted. It's not because they don't have an education or diploma, it's because they are addicted and they can't get a clean drug record.
And then just some of the factors, the environment of factors that, that people are faced with, being homeless, not having a job where they can take time off to go to school to be, all of those factors sometimes lead to people then self-medicating.
And I'm not saying that's the only reason, I'm just saying I think it's a huge one.
Well, actually, I'm just saying, it, it does tie into that because they end up self-medicating because they're, they're just trying to get, deal with life on a daily basis.
That's right, and once you do that, the addiction is so strong, it controls your thought process at that point, and that makes students and, and kids do irrational things that they would not do to the ones they love, to the one, I mean, it just, it consumes your life and, and I've seen it and watched it, so.
We can thank Big Pharma for that.
Huh?
We can thank Big Pharma for that.
Yeah, for creating it.
The pharmaceutical companies, they're the ones that created it.
Well, you know, I, I think we need to make sure that part of that educational mental health is educating, staying away from it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, that's the thing that I don't see happening is we're not, you know, I mean, it's, we're waiting too late to say stay away, and sad to say there again, as I've always said, everything becomes a problem before we start, and drugs is another one. You know, everybody was, it's, it's huge, and now we're going, oh, well, let's back up. Well, it's too late, you know?
And I, I want to say, you, several of us had the opportunity yesterday as part of the communication debrief to hear from students and community members who are here tonight, and I appreciate them taking the time, about how mental health is factoring into that.
Yes.
And, you know, to hear from the students and, and the parents about what they are experiencing, and it's just unbelievable, just again, over the last ten to twenty years, how things have changed and how we as a, as school systems are often the first line of defense in this war. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and, and yeah, thanks again. Next, the title funds application. Tonight we're presenting the title plans for review, we'll bring them to you at your June eighteen meeting for approval, I believe? Is that correct? Okay. Any questions there? Anything different?
How much did they cut us this year?
Do we know the amount yet? And what is the point?
We actually don't have the amount yet. It's the craziest thing, you have to write the application, submit it, get it approved, and then you get the amount in like September. So we, we wrote them on the same amount that we previously had in hopes that we don't get cut.
Okay, that's what it's like.
That's how we write the budget, hoping.
And this past year, we got less, right?
Correct.
Correct?
Right. Okay, next, General Assembly Policies. The General Assembly Policies are recommendations that have been provided by the school board attorney, who provided a brief explanation of what each change is. Our staff is here tonight to answer any questions about the impacts of these changes. So these are changes that, um, due to law. Do anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any about any of these?
Um, I'm sorry to that.
No.
All right. Five dash four dot one, which kind of ties to what we were just talking about to some degree. The guidance counselors will now be called school counselors and must spend eighty percent of their time in direct counseling.
That was the direct legislation.
Sure, yeah.
Good legislation. Mm-hmm.
Yep, is, is this, I just wanted to know if this was affecting us in the way that we are currently doing our practice as far as needing to hire additional positions?
And we've, we've, what we've done, we've calculated and we're meeting those needs with, part of those nineteen additional positions that we are adding this year, we've calculated and we were short at three schools. At Blacksburg Middle School, we only had two counselors, and it was about a five hundred to one ratio there. And Christiansburg Middle School, we only had two counselors there as well, and they have about eight, eight hundred and fifty students total. And then Auburn High School, we're about a half a counselor short there, we only have one counselor at Auburn High School. They've been asking for years for additional counselors, and so we actually gave them a full counselor at Auburn High School to make it two. And then two, what we've done, what we're doing at the elementary schools is guidance is a special, where it's a rotation between music, art, PE.
Library.
Library, and guidance is, is a special there, where they wrote, and, and a lot of, most of our schools, every week the guidance counselor sees every class. So what we've done is, uh, next year, we're adding six STEM teachers for elementary schools. And these STEM teachers will be divided out of eleven elementary schools, so of course it'll be a, a one for every couple of elementary schools, depending on the size. And they will do a rotation with our guidance counselors, where now guidance counselors will see groups of kids every two weeks instead of every week. So then it will give guidance counselors more time to actually work with kids who are in crisis or who are, who really need more one-on-one attention. So we're excited about that, but we're also excited about the STEM positions because these STEM, the STEM, new STEM teachers are going to be teaching, you know, robotics, coding, just simple to Google platform to our kids, and so we're really excited about that.
Which also takes a load off our teachers.
Our teachers are being asked, the new computer science requirements, we had, we had to ask our teachers to do that at elementary schools. Was one more thing we're asking, and that was the state that, that did that. And so now we're able to take some of those requirements out of the classroom teacher to, to have these STEM teachers do that. So that answers sort of a couple of...
Yeah, that's great. I mean, that's something that I've been talking about for a few years now.
And we actually advocated for this legislature versus the one that they would eventually like to go to, which is reducing the, this counselor to student ratio to like one to two fifty. There's several problems with that. First of all, there's setting up counselors out there to be hired for that coming out of school, and second, the financial devastation that would cause to almost all counties would be really difficult, so.
Unless they want to provide the funding.
I'd say that'd be quite an unfunded mandate.
Well, no, actually, they did for this, for these guidance counselors, they did. That's one thing they've touted, they've toot at their horns about a lot, is that they did give additional money for this request. It's one of the few actually funded mandates we got this year. That's rare, very rare.
So the other follow-up on that is, is with, you know, with all of the mental health counseling that's going on, it, it, do we, do we still feel like we're still, especially at the high school level, I feel like, and maybe even middle, at the secondary level, still providing, I guess what I would call classically guidance counseling in the sense of, you know, career and class schedules and things like that? Because that's pretty important to be doing as well.
That's, I mean, that's a very important thing to do at schools.
Is that something that, that, that our counselors are still going to be able to do, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
I think the thing that they have to do that sort of drives me crazy is the testing, the SOL testing. I don't really understand why that falls under the guidance department.
I would agree. It's got dumped on them.
Yeah, and it takes up a lot of their time.
All right, any questions about any of those policies?
Okay, so under four point two two, the safety training, is that something that's available to us as school board members to, to participate in that?
Um, mistakes, do you know anything about that one?
The school's safety training? That at least one administrator?
I'm not really sure, because I'm not really sure what they're referring to, whether it is the school's information.
Okay, well, if you could just get back. Four point two two.
Yep, four dash two point two, the, for administrat-, yeah, and administrator is required, too. I thought, we talked about this the other day.
Yeah, we talked about our safety meeting.
A safety meeting, too, and, and we talked about it with, with Virginia Organizing when we met with them, in, in terms of the MOUs that we're talking about with them, so.
Right.
Okay, well, can we, can we check to see if there's something that school board members can attend? And, okay, I ask a question.
Okay, so the rest of them I could just ask, but the tobacco, free, how are we going to help the community understand not on the property anything whatsoever? Because you can't go to your car, you can't stand outside the building, nothing, ball games, you know, nothing.
Yeah, I was at the hospital the other day, and there's signs all over the place that say absolutely no smoking.
Right, we're, we're gonna have to use...
And there's somebody standing right there in front of the door smoking.
There's gonna have to be announcements, a sign, you know, signs, this is, you know, it is now obviously a state law, however, yeah, my past school divisions didn't allow it.
Even before it was state law.
Prior, before it was state law, because school divisions, a lot of school divisions didn't even allow it, and so we just had to, it's like anything, be on top of it, you have to, at ball games, you have to make announcements, you have to have signs, scrants, right? You already ordered the signs.
Yes, we have, it's very similar to what we did in Richmond.
Okay, and so it, it's gonna be a lot of, and then our employees, too, is something that we'll have to talk to them about.
Right.
Um, yeah, because that's...
And we have communicated with all personnel in the field and positions that would be most likely, not saying they did, but just to reinforce to everybody that it's not allowed to be. Right, so again, this is an addiction, right? So as you all talked about the, the increase in helping our students understand or to deal with the, the nicotine and the vaping and whatever, it's, it's gonna be on the uptick because folks, it's a drug, they need it. So where they've been finding places to indulge, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying this is being very, very stressful for our students and for our employees. So, they're gonna need some support.
Um, we'll talk about that, let's talk about that in our leadership meeting in terms of how to support employees through this... through this, uh, transition, 'cause you're right.
And to let them know that it's a state law, not our policy.
Yeah, well, yes, exactly.
And our students and the community, I mean, so, folks are used to being able to go to their cars or stand outside the gate, you know.
Well, students are allowed to do that anyway.
Right, but I'm just, uh, again, this is gonna be a,
For adults, it's gonna be a more of a challenge.
It's gonna be a, it's definitely gonna be an adult challenge, sure.
Students, too, they're, I'm addicted to it.
Oh, oh, absolutely. There are several that are. Any que- any more questions about the general assembly policies?
On the one dash four dot one, if, um, you happen to know any teachers in your family that might want to apply for a job, just throwing that out there.
Okay. All right.
I was pleased to see that one.
That one and the one last year or the year before for board members.
For board members.
Mm-hmm.
This has been one that's been out there for a long, long time, and it's about time. My daughter may have been a teacher if it hadn't been for this.
Um, all right, V S B A policy, uh, cross-reference. We started cross-referencing our policy updates with V S B A policy updates as they are published. Uh, with the February V S B A updates, we found a few errors with the V S B A policy that provides additional clarification regarding procedures. Our staff members have suggested these policy revisions be made to mirror the V S B A policy. Our staff is, uh, here tonight to answer any questions you have regarding these. Any questions with these? And if you have questions after tonight, um, feel free to contact our staff members prior to us adopting, okay?
I'm seeing most of these are kinda wording changes to just align ourselves more than they are anything substantial, yeah.
Or provide more detail.
Mm-hmm. You know, we're, um, y- y- we have not traditionally gone with the V S B A outline of policies. And so, we've, uh, what we've done is the last year or so, actually start looking at V S B A and cross-referencing, um,
'Cause we're already paying for that service anyway.
Yeah, and, and 'cause most school divisions in Virginia use the V S B A pretty, uh, pretty much line by line and, and related to their school division. We have not, but we felt it would still be good for us to, to see their policies and see how it lines up to ours to make sure, where it's just another way to make sure we're catching everything that we need to catch. Um, and of course, with any changes that we do make, we still will, um, run them past our school board attorney. Okay? Um, next, policy one dash six point eight. Um, this policy governs public address period in our school board meeting. Board members asked for this to be added, um, as an agenda item for discussion regarding procedures. Um, the, the question regarding following, um, the current policy as it's written, um, that stated that you must sign up prior to the meeting. Um, you know, and, and, and from my understanding, as we go back, I think this policy was passed back when there was a lot of public debate over the Confederate flag. And, um, and so, the policy was passed to, um, to do this, plus it was also to verify residency. And so, it gives us time to verify the residency of anyone who is, um, speaking. So, um, you know, basically, what we've, what we've gone to is, um, make an announcement a few minutes before to remind everyone who wants to speak to make sure that they sign up. And, um, you know, any questions about that? Do you wanna keep doing it like that, follow the policy? Would you rather the policy be changed?
Well, I think there's, I, I believe there's two issues in the policy here. There, there is the issue of allowing people who are not Montgomery County residents to speak. And then there is, I think, the separate issue of, um, of not allowing, o- o- of requiring people to sign up before they can speak a public address.
Right.
Right? Am I, am I correct?
Well, the issue, the issue that we talked about is, is, is not allowing folks to,
Walk up to the mic.
Just walk up to the mic and, and make, making the announcement, anyone else wanna come up? Because then,
We can't verify residency.
Their residency in advance, and.
I will say this, you know, we ask them to sign a piece of paper. A lot of times, they don't write their address on that either. So, we, we technically can't verify residency the night of the meeting either way.
Well, I mean, it's based on their honesty, obviously, what they're, they're,
It's, it's the honor, yes.
It's a yes or no, right?
Right. It is the honor system, no matter what, whether it's they sign the paper or they walk up, it's still the honor system.
Is it, I just,
Well, we usually don't ask if they walk up.
But we ask them to state their address.
We do, but.
Well, we,
And we've been enforcing that. That's, they could, put, they could list anybody's address, I mean.
That's true.
But we could, you know, just go one step further and, and say, you know, if you are a citizen of Montgomery County and you want to speak, then, you know, you're allowed to speak. But if you're not, you're not, I mean, it's,
Right, but we could say that at the beginning of the meeting, you know, and, and, and remind, that could be part of the reminder, you can sign up for public address if you're a, but to actually have people sign up prior to the meeting, um.
Now, I think what Connie was saying was, folks can sign up prior to the meeting, but it still doesn't, you can't prove it.
Right.
Right, and so, it would be the same thing if we asked folks if, if there's anyone else who would like to speak. You know, at that point, we could say any other Montgomery County citizens who would like to speak.
That would like to speak, yeah.
That takes it, it, our signup list, does it stay, are you a citizen of Montgomery County?
Yes.
Does it, okay, so, it basically does the same thing. I mean, for years, we allowed, um, folks who attended the meetings, because there have been times where I have spoken at public addresses where I hadn't intended to, but someone said something that I wanted to share something, right? So, it can make the night long. Uh, so then you put some kind of cap on it, right? But I think it's just, I think it's just wrong not to allow folks the opportunity, within reason, to be able to speak once they've come and not had an opportunity to either call or sign up before seven o'clock.
Yeah, 'cause sometimes people come from work, and they don't get here bef- before the meeting starts to sign up. That does ha- that has happened.
I, I, I think whatever risk that we have of, you know, somebody's, you know, speaking who's not a citizen, which, you know, and even that, in most cases, is somebody who's not a citizen has some kind of a, of a pressing topic that is appropriate for them to address us anyway. I mean, I understand why that policy was put in place to kind of keep our meetings focused on the things that are happening here in Montgomery County. Um, eh, but I, I would probably rather, I would agree with Ms. Franklin, and I would rather err to the side of, of, you know, giving people the opportunity to speak as much as possible. Um, I do agree that we should be following our policies, but in this case, I would be in favor of changing the policy. Um, one thing Ms. Franklin alluded to, you know, within reason on time, and that's something that, you know, um, I think sometimes, uh, the, the public, y- y- a, a topic comes up and the public takes an immediate interest in it, and they wanna come to the meeting and express themselves. And that happens, and I think that's great, and I support that, and sometimes we do need more than the half hour. But I also think it's unfair to our staff especially, um, to turn, and it does, this doesn't happen very often, but occasionally, the school board meeting turns into a public hearing. Um, and I don't know, you know, at some point, I would probably, you know, if we're gonna look at the policy, um, you know, I probably would also be in favor of, of capping the time at some point. I mean, it doesn't need, I, I'm, I don't mean I, I wanna cap it at half an hour. I think we should still do the thing where we can vote to, to extend another half an hour. But maybe we should cap it at one hour or two hours or something like that. There's gotta be some kind of a, uh, of a limit if we're not planning on doing a public hearing.
And an alternative to that would be that when you get to the end of the list, that the board has the option then to vote. Are we gonna extend to anyone who would like to walk up?
Yeah.
If you've been here half an hour, that's sort of a no-brainer. If you've been here three hours and you've heard the same thing over and over and over, and another hour's worth of people want to speak, then you might wanna reconsider whether you wanna sit. I, I think that should be left to the night, the situation, the issue, and the board sitting there at the time to vote whether they wanna extend to people not signed up. And maybe even ask for a show of hands, how many more people want to speak who have not signed up, and then let the board decide if they're gonna extend it. That is an alternative suggestion.
And we've done that many, 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 many times.
We had, our practice has been to do.
I mean, and I've been here till ten and eleven o'clock, listening to public address.
Right.
The only, my only concern, and I'm always, you know, and I, I know the group a couple of meetings ago probably just wanted to, you know, come up here and hit me, but for what, you know, I kinda said, but I truly believe that, 'cause I do think sometimes when you've got groups that have strong feelings for a certain issue, they do become emotional. And I do think if we're going to allow that continuously, that needs to be controlled.
Yes.
Because that is one thing that I do feel that is disrespectful. And if I'm sitting here till midnight, which I do not mind, and have many, many times, I, I, I want to know that the crowd is also being respectful to my feelings as much as I'm being respectful to listening to what they feel. And I understand it all can be emotional, but, you know, it's, it's like it's a, sometimes I call things a bandwagon. You know, it's like one person gets on, then the other person gets keyed up to what they said, and,
Right.
and then it becomes just an outblowing. And I think we, we need to find something, whether it's signing up is the answer or a vote, that controls that, because it's, I think, has gotten out of hand.
Yes.
And the last meeting even, what was, might not have been as bad, it still was out of hand. And I, I just don't think anybody should have to go through that. That's just my thoughts, especially sometimes when it deals with,
Personnel.
Personnel that we can't talk about, period.
And that we want, we have worked so hard at protecting their privacy.
Absolutely.
And then it gets out in the media, you know, and it's, their privacy's gone.
So, you know, it, um, I just think, like I said, we need to come up with some solution that keeps control of emotions.
It's hard to control people's emotions, and, you know, if you try to control mine sometimes, they just make it,
And me, too. What I said.
So, um,
But I tone mine down, and I keep it within a minute.
So, um, I, I would be in favor of looking at some type of time limit, because I have a couple of times voted no, because our agenda needed our focus.
Absolutely.
And if we're, uh, listening, as Connie said, to the same thing over and over again, we've got thousands of emails and phone calls and conversations, uh, we still have business to take care of in a, in a mind where we're not half asleep, okay?
So, what I need, I need from you guys is, um, you know, in- individual feedback over the next couple of weeks, if you have it, is to, you know, do you wanna change it at all? If so, what would it look like if, if we did change it? Um, we'll go from there, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is to return to regular session. Do I have a motion to return to regular session?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we return to regular session. All right.
All right, it's me, I believe, right? Policy, uh, five dash four point two for approval. Uh, the revisions of five dash four point two allow us more time for provisionally licensed teachers to obtain their license and move to continuing contract status. Also grants the division more time to work with beginning teachers who may be on a plan of improvement in their third year, giving them two more years to continue to grow and earn continuing contract status. Tonight, we're asking for approval of this policy.
Do I have a motion to approve revisions to policy five dash four dot two as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
You know, at, at first, when I read this, it was like, you know, the union, and he came out and said, no, we should not add any more time. But then, as you read through it, it's a benefit to everyone.
It is, and it, it's more aligned with what the state now is, uh, is providing for those teachers. Especially since the provisional's changed from three to five years.
Yeah.
So, it, it better aligns with that, it makes sense.
And I think it's an advantage to staff, is it not? I mean, that's when we talked about it the last,
But the, the original,
It's a big advantage for teachers, too.
Yeah.
Gives them more opportunity to become,
That's what I meant by staff, sorry.
And I did actually consult our M C E A representatives just to get their take on it, and, and they seemed positive about it as well.
Right. Of course, originally, it was, you know, the, we kept it, the, the state allowed us to go to five years a few years ago. But we kept it at three, saying we ought to know if a teacher should ge- get, continue a contract in three years or not. And, um, y- y- instead of having extended it out to five, but when they extended out the provisional license, we've had several that did not finish the, the, what was needed, three years, and, you know, we're sort of stuck. And so, now it helps us to allow them to, um, keep working force.
Especially for their wonderful teachers.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, so, okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, because this is a policy change, Ms. Drake, can you please call the roll? Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Frogge?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
All right, uh, next, uh, policy six dash six point two. This is also, um, being brought to you for approval. The revisions to, uh, this policy allow M C P S to award locally verified credits to students with disabilities seeking a standard diploma.
Do I have a motion to approve revisions to policy six dash six dot two as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, because this is a policy change as well, Ms. Drake, will you please call roll? Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Frogge?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Are there any matters of unfinished business? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to new business. Are there any matters of new business? Okay, hearing and see, hearing and seeing none, uh, we will move on to announcements. Are there any announcements, um, that any of the board members would like to make? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to upcoming board meetings. Um, the,
Yeah, the June, that July meeting, have we decided?
Yes, um,
What was that, final feedback on that?
Yeah, so, um, the agenda preparation is on your agenda, board members. It has been proposed by multiple board members that we can cancel all meetings in July. Is anyone opposed to canceling the July sixteenth school board meeting?
Just, just to clarify, if, if something urgent comes up, like,
Right.
Correct.
How do we handle that? Just, just curious.
If something urgent comes up, then,
I mean, like, we have to approve a hiring or something at the last minute.
Well, what we've done in the past, um, just in the past few years, is what we have done is, at the last meeting in June, we have giving, given, um, board approval for, uh, Dr. Meyer to approve the personnel report. Um, in, in lieu of our, our meetings, just for the month of July.
So, that's how we cover it.
Because we wanna make sure that that continues to,
That's usually the one thing that pops up.
That, that move forward, right? And then, any other emergency, we would handle as it comes up. Okay, all right, any discussion? Any? Okay, any concerns? All right, so, uh, we'll move on now to closed session. Our next order of business is closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss two personnel matters as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia?
I'm s- I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, and one business matter.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And one business matter.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are now into closed session.